Good evening, everyone. I'd like you to stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our first presentation tonight is Kathy Mayer with the budget.
Kelly DeBaio?
Here.
Kevin Cusell?
Here.
Sharon Holing?
Here.
Benny Salviou? Ed Sturgis? Thank you.
Now, Kathy Mayer with the budget. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. There has been little change since my last presentation on March 28th. The total general fund budget being presented to voters on May 17th is $70,827.217, representing an increase of $3,564,334, or 5.3% over the current year's budget. The expenditures that make up the general support portion of the budget, Board of Education, Superintendent's Office, Business Office, Buildings and Grounds, Legal, Property and Liability Insurance, and BOSI's administration fees remain the same. A slight decrease of $12,600 is due in large part to reduction in the district's share of BOSI's administrative services. Buildings and grounds increased with the inclusion of three cleaner positions for the elementary schools, the maintenance agreement with advanced cleaning, and various preventive maintenance contracts. An additional $12,000 has been added to property and liability insurance to procure cyber security insurance for the district. General teaching codes, which include all expenses related to... This increase is largely the result of increases in special education services. The student support services staff have been reviewing student placements, and it has been determined that if we create a new special education classroom at the high school, four of our students can return to this program rather than attend a BOSI's program. This saved approximately $300,000 in BOSI's costs but added $100,000 in staffing and fringe benefits. The computer support services coaster with Capital Region BOSI's is not being renewed, and a position was created for IT support. This did not result in an increase as the 2122 budget had two part-time computer technician positions that weren't filled. This elimination of services resulted in a savings of $175,000. Two teaching positions have been eliminated through attrition resulting in approximately $150,000 in salary and benefit savings. An athletic trainer position is included in this proposed budget with a portion of the funding coming from the elimination of the contract with St. Mary's Hospital for athletic training services. Transportation costs are skyrocketing. The district currently participates in a joint venture with the Greater Johnstown School District whereby BOSI's provides transportation services for both districts. Students who are in programs outside of the district or those that are in temporary housing in most cases need transportation services provided by an independent contractor. In these instances, BOSI's cannot provide transportation services due to driver shortages or there are too many runs and they can't accommodate them all. These independent runs can cost up to $600 per day. The district will receive 90% aid on those costs, but the expense needs to be borne in the current year to receive aid in the following year. Transportation costs this year are increasing by $600,000. Fringe benefits, health and dental insurance, workers' compensation, social security and retirement plans are increasing by $95,000. Social security and the retirement plans are based on a percentage of salaries, and those percentages are determined by New York State and the federal government. A decrease in the health insurance line item is the major, is the main factor in keeping this increase to $95,000 as rates for the Empire Blue Cross plan are decreasing by 2% and the teacher's share of health insurance contributions is increasing to 20%. Debt service is increasing by $569,000. Again, these costs are predetermined and are the principal and interest payments due on outstanding debt from current and past capital projects. Building aid is received to help offset these costs. Now, onto revenues. State aid is increasing by $1,457,508. The majority of this is the $922,000 increase in foundation aid. It is projected that transportation and BOSI's aid will increase by $750,000 and $175,000 respectively, and public and private access cost aids by approximately $300,000. Again, these revenues are based on prior year expenses. Building aid is decreasing by $750,000 even though debt service expenses are increasing. This year, $1,690,500 is being transferred from the Debt Service Reserve Fund to help defray these costs. Dr. Rick Tims and his team, the district's financial planners, provide these estimates. The Debt Service Reserve Fund is used to pay the district's share of debt service and keep the cost to taxpayers for capital projects at a minimum. The tax cap this year is 1.45%, or $224,736, and is included as part of the revenue package. Slight adjustments in other miscellaneous revenue is resulting in an overall increase of $33,000. These include interest earnings, admissions to athletic games, rental of classrooms by HFM BOSI's, non-resident tuition, and refund of prior year expenses. This refund of prior year expenses is the excess revenue BOSI's generates each year that must be returned to the component districts. It is a very arduous task for BOSI's to estimate what the exact, exact cost of programs will be for each district as participation in some of these of their programs fluctuates throughout the year as students move from district to district or move into or out of the region. Therefore, once their financial records are completed, excess revenue is returned to each district. The balance of the revenue is the transfer from the Debt Service Reserve Fund and the appropriation of $1,453,761 in fund balance. It is anticipated that the $1,296,000 that is designated as appropriated fund balance in the 2021-22 school year will not be needed, so that will remain as part of fund balance at year end. As of June 30th, 2021, the district's fund balance was just over $7.5 million. Again, administration is working with Dr. Tims to prepare a five-year financial plan that will be presented to the board in a few weeks. This financial plan estimates future expenses and revenue based on a variety of assumptions. It is a tool that we use to monitor the district's financial health and helps avoid large spikes in property taxes. Finally, a separate proposition will be on the ballot for 366 passenger buses and a plow truck for buildings and grounds at a total cost of $481,868. The bus purchase and vehicle reserve fund will cover the expense for these vehicles and will have no impact on the general fund budget. There are currently four seats vacant on the Board of Education, three with three-year terms, and one to fill a two-year vacancy. Anyone interested in running for the school board, please contact me or visit the website for more information. Petitions with signatures of 100 qualified voters residing within the Glover'sville School District need to be turned into the district office by 5:00 p.m. on April 27th.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Any questions? Very good, then. Mr. Ivansik, Technology Presentation.
My name is John Ivansik. I'm the department chair for the Technology Department and the Business Department. Tonight, we're just going to go over the technology stuff. I get, I don't know if you've got a handout packet or not. Okay. It's big. I'm not going to go through each word of it. It'll be here all night. So what I'm going to do is just try to give you a quick snippet of basically what a program does for the students at Glover'sville. Starting with the middle school. We have a kind of a hybrid program in the middle school where it is your traditional technology program and a mixture with the Project Lead the Way program. Project Lead the Way and the state program have many different modules such as design modeling, automation robotics, app creators, computer science, and energy, environment, flight and space, science of technology, magic of electronics, green, I mean, goes on and on, medical detectives and stuff like that. Obviously, we can't do it all. So what our middle school does is we mostly focus on the design and modeling and automation and robotics. And then we do just a little flavor of the other ones that get thrown in when they can. We basically have the middle school model their program off what's going to help us at the high school. Okay? So that's a middle school program. The high school program, we have a double, twofold program up there. We have a Project Lead the Way program, which is our pre-engineering program where kids would go into like a four-year schools and hopefully get into engineering fields. We also have what we call our traditional technology program, which is more of your technical-based program where kids probably would either go into the job market or go into like a two-year schooling or technical schooling, something like that. So if you end up packing, what I did is I broke it down, and all the courses that are in the red are PLTW, or Project Lead the Way program courses. We have five courses, it's a five-course sequence, which is pretty, I mean, there is other courses we could offer some schools do, but that puts us right up there as pretty much as what we Project Lead the Way call a star school because we have the middle school program and we have enough to be a complete program at the high school. So we're right there with Saratoga, we're right there with the Niski unit programs and stuff like that. Most of the kids that go through the Project Lead the Way program courses do go on to college. Not all of them obviously end up in engineering. Right now, I think the last couple of years, our senior classes that graduated, we were averaging about 12 kids that go on to a four-year engineering school and then continue on to a job. So, or at the height of the program height, we were probably around 18. So that's pretty good. Prior to this program, being here, I don't have the exact numbers, but I remember before we started the program, we went way back to like 1950s, and we only had something like 18 kids total that went on to a four-year engineering schools. So we really upped that in there. Well, another advantage that we have hit that, which is pretty awesome for our district here, is that we also still offer the other part of the technology program where we are servicing all our kids. We're servicing kids that go into four-year schools, and we're also serving kids that need what we call CDOs credit, and a lot of that's our special education kids, and a lot of our kids that stay local too. So they can go, they can also, we offer eight courses in that, and they can take a five-course sequence and get their graduation requirements there. We also have the option that they can take our DDP course, which is our freshman course, and those kids can actually substitute that out for our credit. So we got some options for kids to move around, which is nice. Most of our numbers, I think we're in the mid-200s this year. I think around 230, 230 kids approximately go through the program. At the height of the program, we were around over 300. Last year's top 10 class, graduation class, out of the top 10, we had eight of the kids that went through our program. So we're doing pretty good. Obviously, there's a transition coming because I'm retiring, and I think Dave's going. So we're gonna, there's gonna have to be, you know, we're gonna have to find some more, hopefully find some replacements to keep the program going. Any questions? There's obviously more to it. But if you guys go through the packet, it will give you the actual breakdown of course for course. I don't know if you want me to do that or not. I mean, because that's just going to take away that there. But we do offer a lot. I mean, the kids are very lucky that they can go through and have a program like this. What's nice about it is it feeds into, like I tell the kids all the time, it kind of, it kind of verifies what they're doing in their core courses. Because we use English when they have to write engineering reports, we use science, physics, chemistry, whatever. We obviously use math, lots of math. Okay? So we can show them the importance of why they need those other courses too in school. Questions?
Any questions?
I just wanted to get rid of, this is more of our secondary program. It has been for a long time, and I certainly applaud John and Dave Wilder for their role in doing that. And the greatest challenge is replacing people with a certification that is not that common. So we're actively recruiting technology-certified educators, but there's big shoes to fill and it's going to be difficult. But this has been a flagship program for our district. As you said, most of our STEM students have flourished in these programs, and to see that percentage of kids going on to degrees in engineering is a testament to the educators. So thank you. Congratulations on your pending retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy.
Karen Holing, new course presentation. Karen, new course presentation.
Okay, so I was here last month, and I gave you a little sneak preview of a course that we had just started talking about. And in the past month, we've been pretty busy trying to put it together, and this is what we've come up with. Okay, so the, this is a proposal for a new course and club. It's called Video Journalism and Social Media Marketing. Okay, so we're going to be asking the board for approval for the course, which is an elective, and also for the club because they're going to go hand in hand. Okay? So, here we go. So the course description, sorry about that. Whoops. I need my, I can't operate my finger, I need a mouse. Hold on a second. Okay. So the class will teach the students how to create a platform. We're calling it the hallway, and that will be generated by students and will address issues that are important to the students. So this is actually Osama's idea, and you can jump in anytime you want. The goal is to manage and market their website effectively and responsibly through social media and platforms. So while we are sort of creating and starting this hallway, they're going to come in and they're going to bring the ideas to grow this endeavor. The students are going to collaborate with each other while participating in this project-based learning environment, and they're going to produce content that includes creative and interactive photos, videos, blogs, and potentially a weekly talk show. We're going to try to start off small, but it has like potential to get pretty big, depending on the students' interests and their talents and that kind of thing. So the teachers, obviously, will be me, probably because I'm the only one in the department that has a bachelor's in arts and communications. That was my first career. I went to a school for communications, Marist College, years ago, and teaching is actually my second career. So I worked for about 10 years in public relations and in business writing, so I have the background to be teaching this class. When I first came here, I started to incorporate an online sort of newspaper with the school. It was called Paw Prints, and it was working for a little bit, but I needed a little bit more support, so I sort of stopped that for a little bit. But that was sort of my passion when I first came here, was to create a platform for students to like show off their writing skills and generate work that was important to them. But now I think it's time, now that Osama had this great idea, to take it to a next level, hopefully. And Osama's going to also be assisting with this endeavor. He's going to be the club advisor, and he's going to work closely with me in developing the content for the course and helping the kids, you know, teach the kids the skills that's needed. He has a BA in multimedia and media studies. Where did you go to college?
Morey College.
Okay, there you go. And he has 10 years of experience in social media management, as you know, doing great things for our district, screenplay writing, and content creation. So I think we make a good team.
I agree.
Okay. Okay, so this really lines in greatly with our ELA standards. I mean, it fits right in. And I could have listed a lot more, but I think we're going to focus on the writing standards, producing clear and coherent writing, also, you know, planning, revising, editing, rewriting. That's so important in the ELA curriculum. And this, for sure, you know, using technology, including the internet, to produce and publish writing. These standards are taken right from the New York State website. And also the speaking and listening standard, which really requires students to integrate and evaluate information presented, and I like this, in diverse media and formats. So this is going to be really important, especially like now that the kids are always online, they're sort of struggling with the interpersonal communication skills. So we hope to get them engaged with each other and with adults interviewing, asking questions, sort of, we take for granted those skills, but it's really sort of lacking in this generation, so I think that would be a really neat way to sort of improve those skills. Scheduling, so far, we think it's going to, we're going to offer it as an elective to 10th and 11th graders, but really, all students can and should be encouraged to join the club. It's really going to be hard to find students that has, that have time in their schedules for this elective, so that's why we're like promoting this now, so we can market this to the students early enough for them to fill their fall schedules. It's going to be every other day in my room. Yeah, Osama has an office in the library, and that's sort of going to be our lab where we keep the equipment. And it's like a bigger, more relaxed environment that's conducive to like collaboration, that kind of thing. But like I said, we're going to need to start promoting the class like tomorrow, but hopefully to some kids to get it so their schedules will reflect it next year in the fall. These are our objectives. We're starting small because it's easier to grow than to scale back, we feel so. In the first year, we're hoping students will learn how to edit and publish a website, which is a great skill for career building here, create written and visual content for the website, learn how to create and monitor social media sites, which is hugely important to teach some social media responsibility. We feel it's going to be a very important skill in the 21st century for sure, and understand how to market information on social media, which is going to be pretty cool, I think. So those are the four main objectives. Of course, it can get bigger if the students are willing to stretch themselves. The startup costs, we included in your package. Osama had a list of really specific items. We thought we were going to need to get this up and running, about $6,800, and that was probably like a one-time fee, right?
Correct.
For, yeah, yeah. So yeah, we can talk more about that. If you have questions. And the club. So Osama will be the advisor, of course, working collaboration with me and the work that we're doing in class. And yeah, it will be like a supplement to the course and offered to all students. So if they don't have time in their schedule to take the elective, they're not excluded. You know, they absolutely can join the club. And here's a little sneak preview that Osama generated, and we're going to show you a little bit. Oopsie daisy. So this is like a rough, a rough idea of the hallway. You know, when we're thinking of a hallway, it's like a forum for students, by students, where students can sort of come together, talk about their needs, talk about their feelings, really, it really clicks the SEL button for sure. So what would happen when they, when they go into this hallway website, they click "Join the Discussion," and from there, there's, you know, all different, all different categories here, you know, ways to be a better me, you know, off the topic, share and discuss your experiences or questions, information about classrooms and teachers, stuff that's happening after school, you know, bullying, how do you, you know, what's it like to, you know, what's it like to be bullied, how do you get help if you're bullied? You know, we were thinking of perhaps having maybe some drama kids, maybe act out skits, if we could maybe interview people, of course, anonymity would be strictly, you know, for, you know, we'd black out their faces and all of that. But just a place for students to go to sort of know they're not alone, perhaps, maybe a section on addiction, harassment. These are all, of course, can change, but we want to like show something to the kids and say, here's a starting point, what do you think? And yeah, so you can see all the different tabs. Real Talk would be the TV show if we ever maybe got to that point, we're hoping. So yeah, so what we're asking for today is approval of the elective to maybe run it in the fall and permission to start the club as well, to go hand in hand. Any questions?
I'd love to take the course.
That's good.
But how do you ensure appropriateness with what the students have to say on the website?
So we supervise it, and everything will be filtered, and then we're going to have other students, we'll break up the classroom where there's certain students who are monitors on there, while ultimately...
Yeah, we're the admins, of course. So it all comes through us, yeah.
So you limit the amount of conversations that could take place on there just so that you're not coming in on Monday morning and see pages and pages of dialogue that might not be the best?
Yeah.
So these are categories that I created, but we could start with one category and it'd be limited to, it'd be limited just to that one category. So we can start with like a better me, and then kids could comment, publish things to that page, and it would be easier for us to monitor.
Yeah.
Definitely limited.
I see that ultimately as like, you know, we're sort of the gatekeepers, and then we present it to the club and the students, and we're like, you know, what do you think should be on here this week? Yeah, so...
Do you get to the point where you, there's so much content that it becomes almost impossible to monitor and read everything before it's posted, or how?
Well, so the idea would be kind of train the kids how to monitor it and trust them with actually monitoring and...
Yeah, are you saying like it would be like too much?
Yeah, it's where the students find a forum, a platform to say an awful lot of things that the two of you might not be able to stay on top of because it's so much, or is it, you're, it's not getting posted unless you see it?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Or it doesn't get posted unless we see it.
Okay.
Yep. So you know, it might, we might come in Monday morning and have, you know, 50 posts, maybe like seven are presentable. You know, you'd have to weed it out, you know?
So, and yeah, you'll decide what gets put up. Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it gets filtered.
Yeah. It's, you know, everything's, it's going to be pretty organic, depending on what the kids want. You know, they might not even like these categories, we're going to sort of see, but...
Well, I certainly like the categories, so...
Yeah. And you know, it could be, you know, maybe we're writing an article about, you know, a new teacher, or maybe they're going to go video a new teacher, or we're just going to say, you know, we're going to really let it drive it.
It would be a cool category would be post-secondary plans.
Yep, for sure.
Students' plans after high school, and be interesting to see what they come up with. Any questions? I think it's great. I think it's great collaboration, and I appreciate you two bringing it to us so quickly. So do they have to make a motion to accept it, or is it...
It's on the, it's on the...
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Next on the agenda is public comment. Any questions or concerns? Anyone can post on the Facebook page, and someone will address those questions or concerns. Minutes from the meeting of 3:28-22. A motion to accept. Kevin. A second, Vincent. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Kelly DeBaio? Kelly DeBaio? Kevin Cusell?
Yes.
Sharon Holing?
Yes.
Benny Salviou?
Yes.
Ed Sturgis?
Yes.
You fly then.
Motion passed. Superintendent's reports.
Okay. Promise to be brief tonight, since I know we have a number of reports. Salviou doesn't believe it, but I want to thank the dugout club and Glover'sville Football Alumni Club for their donation of a golf cart to be used for both the football and the baseball program. Park Harris, the one we had was at end of life, and they generously are donating that, so we certainly appreciate their generosity. Also wanted to point out... Also wanted to point out, there's three retirements on tonight's agenda. Lori Kent, Administrator, she's here, Elementary Curriculum Director, after eight years. Santa Orlando Teacher after 20 years. And Jessica George after 19 years. Certainly wish them all a long, happy, healthy retirement. Thanks for serving. I also just wanted to point out, there's a lot of them on here. So I won't name them by name. There's a lot of tenure recommendations and congratulate all those receiving tenure tonight. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Administrative reports. Brian De Pasquale?
We're actually going to be reporting as an elementary team. And then each school having an individual report here. So if you just give us a second, we'll get our presentation fired up.
Mr. Salviou is fired up too.
All right. So we're going to start with English Language Arts. So this year, we have just implemented the Haggerty Pilot Program in all three schools. And what Haggerty is, is it's a phonemic awareness instruction. And we've done this at the tier three level. We're looking at it in a couple of different classrooms through kindergarten through third grade. We've started mainly as a tier one support, but we're starting to look at how it could also be integrated in as a tier two for grades two and third grade as well. So we'll be continuing to look at that for the remainder of this year, collecting data on that and kind of expanding the implementation as we continue into next year. So looking at some of our work surrounding it all. So that would be that data review of the pilot groups, which would be starting this year. We're also going to be increasing phonemic awareness and phonics instruction at the tier one level, especially at K2, just kind of specifying when during our day and our blocks that we'll be doing that. And kind of how that would look within our curriculum mapping over the summer. And then defining our intervention supports for tier two and three to make that just a little bit more, as need arises, where they go and kind of ebb and flow in and out of the tiers.
So that is, thank you, Berndt. That is a K5 look at our literacy initiatives at the elementary level. This is a K5 overview of math at the elementary program. We are in year one of implementing the Ready Math program. That dovetails with iReady, the digital version of that, where each student has their own individual pathway. And then we use that iReady program as a diagnostic tool throughout the year. And I know you guys have heard a little bit about that. Like I said, though, we are in year one of implementing the Ready Math program. We are definitely seeing through iReady, our diagnostics, and in our program materials, that there has been, as you've seen before, some deficits that we are seeing as a result of the pandemic. So how are we going to improve that K5? Is we're going to, we're currently having discussions around the delivery of AIS math this year. Each of our primary and the elementary building at Boulevard have AIS math teachers. And we're identifying target students for the remainder of this year and next year. We're also exploring supports through BOCs that will help us meet some additional student needs that we are predicting for next year as well. And then we are in the process of continuing professional development with regard to Ready Math K5. We've had several professional development opportunities over the summer and throughout this year, but that will continue as the implementation of Ready Math is more than a one-year rollout. Any questions on elementary math K5?
Let me see, can you elaborate a little bit on the BOCs support that we're exploring?
Yeah, that's where we're working with Dr. Wojewski. We're going to have some support, I think, in reading and math. We're looking to bring in another service provider, right? Someone that we can have working with, both with our teachers to support that math curriculum and someone that we can have intensive support for the highest need students. Because right now, while having two AIS teachers at the elementary level is a great, is a great thing for us, there's still a lot of students that need extra support. So we do need additional staff members and we're doing that through that BOCs cohort.
And a lot of that too is really looking at this being the first year that we have that AIS support, how that's going to be provided. So we targeted certain grade levels this year. But then how would that little bit of additional support, how we can re-target and define?
And expand.
Yeah. And just to piggyback to the phonemic awareness piece of ELA was also, that was based on our iReady diagnostic results. And that was an area of consistent need and a deficit. So that was why we chose that as a pilot program.
I just want to point out that this is something that when Kathy first opened the budget before we kind of had to shift a little bit, that was one of the things that we were stressing was to bring in staff to assist with those students. So we have not given up on that. We're just utilizing BOCs because the costs are, there's a substantial savings. Might not have as much as we'd like, but it's, it's not, all is not lost, is what I wonder.
So the next piece is our social-emotional learning. Over the past few board meetings, we've talked more about our focus on social-emotional learning. About a month and a half ago, we had Sam Feeney come in, do a training with our district team. This is a look at what we're doing now that we're breaking off. So through the elementaries, we're really putting a focus on what we can do to support our students' mental health. It's probably the only slide here that we don't have a true diagnostic to tell where our students are actually at. So doing that, we're kind of using our, what we already had and then building upon that program. So we utilize PBIS, that's our Positive Behavior Intervention Systems, and our second step, which is our curriculum piece. So a few things that we do in the elementary, we do have opportunities monthly. Through our PBIS, we have celebrations. Students are trying to earn those celebrations throughout the month. When we kind of falter in those things or when we can't earn those, that gives us a teaching opportunity for our students. So we teach to them monthly, trying to refocus them and give them the skills to, if they ever get facing problems that they faced in the past, they can kind of work their way through it because we're giving them the tools. From our conversations with Sam Feeney, we are also looking at our weekly reteaching. So that goes along with our second step. Our counseling team has been working on how to develop lessons and more lessons for our teachers that they can provide to the students throughout the week. So second step gives us a very defined lesson. And then we're supposed to support it throughout the week to teach that skill. So that's kind of a piggyback on that. And then we're developing social-emotional learning committees at the elementary level. We would like to be, you know, have a plan pre-K to 12, but we each need kind of a committee to align us with the students we have and their age levels. Like what might happen at the high school might not be happening in our pre-K rooms, obviously. The conversations are going to be different, but how do we make sure that we do have a common language from pre-K all the way to 12th grade? So our students do feel that, you know, connection with that. So along with some other things we do is our daily announcements. We always have a social-emotional learning kind of message to wrap it up. We have our PBIS winners. Those are our monthly, our weekly ticket winners. So we have the Husky Paws in all the elementaries. Those are for students when they get caught doing something good. We hand those out and there's a weekly drawing for them, Student of the Month. And then we have some, you know, whole and small group instruction to kind of piggyback off of those lessons that we teach throughout the weeks. Any questions for the social-emotional learning piece? So now we'll just kind of go into the individual schools. So I'll start with Park Terrace. So one of the things we've been looking at all year is our attendance rate as we're coming back into some sort of normalcy that it is taking a hit. So right now, we're at 88.15 percentage for the year, which is about 4% lower than traditional years past. For the month of March, it was 87.67. So just to kind of put it into perspective, we're hoping and we're very hopeful that these next few months, as the weather gets better and we don't have kind of challenges to get to school, we will see those numbers increase. But it will be one of our focuses here moving forward. I think every building has had developed kind of ideas, working with PTA, different members in our school on what we can do to increase those numbers next year. So that is one of the talking pieces that's happening in every building. But just for Park Terrace, those are our numbers, so. We just finished our third benchmark. This was our FNP check-in. I will say at Park Terrace, we saw some huge increases with our students. So we're actually a little bit above where we were. Actually, not a little bit, you know, three or four percentage points above where we were in 2020, in March, right before the closure. So what meets the expectation for grade level? Kindergarten, we're at 47% of students are meeting or exceeding the grade level expectation. In first grade, it's 37, and then in second grade, it's 40%. So those are impressive numbers, seeing that what we were doing last year, coming out of that and trying to boost up our numbers and doing everything. So our benchmark numbers are looking very promising and we're headed in the right direction. So it does support kind of the pilot things that we're doing. And then how do we expand those things moving forward? So that's what our benchmark data is. We didn't do iReady this past round because it was a kind of a check-in. So our iReady data is still from February. So we're looking at that, saying if our reading data is going up that much, our hope is that we'll see that in all other avenues as we test more. So the elementaries also participated in Ronald McDonald House charities. As for you that don't know, that's a kind of a reading challenge. We ask our students to put in reading and they can get sponsors and that's how they earn funds. So Park Terrace raised about $2,000, which was huge for, you know, about 300 students to put together and really raise a good amount of funds. And there was about 30 students that were engaged in that. So when we talked to Nancy from the charities program, she was saying, no, in your first year, having 10% would be a lot of students. So that's a great thing that we were able to kind of help raise. And then looking ahead, Park Terrace is going to have an activity night on May 12. It's one of our first nights that we're going to be able to kind of welcome families back into the school. We missed our open house because of where we were. We didn't have a in-person open house. So it's going to be our first activity that we're bringing, you know, parents and families back in. We'll have a book fair, a science fair. We're working with PTA and they were going to provide some kind of event too. And then it'll be also our art fair. So we have all of that coming. PBIS, we're having celebrations throughout the following next couple of months. But this Thursday is our scavenger hunt for students. So they're going to kind of go through the building because they've been showing our three Bs, you know, be respectful, be responsible, be kind. So we're celebrating that. And the last thing I have is, I think the most exciting thing is, our beehive is on its way to get bees in it. So Cindy, our beekeeper, actually came today. She did presentations with all of our second graders on what happens with bees. And she teaches them quite a bit of material on that. She actually took the beehive with her today because the bees are arriving the week of the 24th. So weather dependent, we're going to have bees put into the beehive. She just has to have a day where it's dry because bees can't fly in the rain. So one of the things we learned today. So that'll be happening, the bees will be posted pretty soon. Any questions for just Park Terrace? This is some of the pictures, your packets. These are some Park Terrace students. You can see that Cindy actually made our slide today because she was here and presenting. So and there's a few other different things. We had our agricultural week where they were doing composting with the worms and then some of our St. Patrick's Day celebrations.
Okay, I'm breaking through. So our attendance for this school year so far is very similar, 88.2. And then looking at it specifically for the month of March, not too much of a difference. So very similar to how the year has been going. And like we said, you know, we're looking for that increase hopefully as the warmer weather is here. And it's not as much cold to stand outside and walk through. So with ELA, we're looking at a pilot within our co-teach classrooms. If we're looking specifically at our data, it is just an update period right now for our quarter three. So we are seeing that increase. It's coming along. We'd like to see it continue to increase, maybe a little bit more percentage points. And that's why some of these pilots have been incorporated in, to look and identify those deficits. But we are still steadily increasing. So we have focusing specifically on some of the phonics instruction because along with iReady data and other assessments that we're using, we're identifying that phonics along with phonemic awareness is an area of concern. So we've been targeting that specifically within those classrooms and a couple of other groups specifically related to our SBST process, which is where students are brought forth when there's a concern that their academic or behavioral within the classroom. And it's a committee where we kind of discuss and make ideas as to how to move them forward and then meet pretty regularly with them. We also participated in the Ronald McDonald House charity. We raised over 1,600. I haven't counted it fully yet, but it was an amazing job. So they've done a great job with our reading challenge. We had a couple of other reading challenges going on in Kingsborough for that month. It was just a big, a reading adventure, we called it. So we did a lot of read-alouds throughout the school. Parents participated with read-alouds at home and sent in like an overview of pictures and stories that they read. And that's sprinkled along our walls. We have a bookworm, we call it, and all of their pictures are kind of traveling through the walls of our school. We have the principal challenge that comes up as a result of the Ronald McDonald reading extravaganza kind of. And that's where we will be silly-strung by the kids. Cody as well. Boulevard will be something, doing something a little different. So that was, you know, to increase the participation and the fun. So they're looking forward to that and that's when we return from break. One of the other things we have coming up is an art show. Other activities that will be happening as well, different make and take games and things for math or ELA or different things that they can come. Chalk, you know, drawings on the sidewalk, checking out the art in the school. Just a night to bring in the community and just kind of celebrate all the things that they've done, which is wonderful to get everybody to be able to come in. We were fortunate to be able to have parents come too. We had a St. Patrick's Day parade back in March. And so that was a lot of fun. We had Sea of Green and we made instruments. Some of it went along too with kindergarten, science unit. So they had a lot of fun with making those instruments and then being able to parade around the school. We also have our after-school activities in clubs. So we have Kindness Club that's continuing to go on. They do some great things. They've also kind of worked with providing prizes for our PBIS winners. So our weekly winners that are announced. And the Kindness Club has gone and made bags and different things for them to celebrate, you know, the great reward of showing our three Bs of being respectful, being responsible and being safe. And then we also had Agriculture Week. We also have a Earth Day preparation where the second graders are kind of leading the rest of the school. We're having a sing-along. And this is a lot of the B-Bots and the VR goggles. We've been exploring through library and in some of the classrooms with some of the great technology. And also all of our poor methane boards are installed within our building. And so that's exciting. The reading stuff up in the corner.
Any questions for Kingsborough?
Yeah, any questions.
And this is just what we have in comments. We just put it together. First is that we're going to try to have in-person field, or we're not trying. We're scheduling our in-person field trips as we're kind of going through the end of the year. So kindergarten is looking at Animal Land. Those are already set. First grade's looking at a beach day. And then second grade's looking at going to Beaver Sprite. So those are the field trips that we have for Kingsborough and Park Terrace. If you want to talk about it. Second grade?
Yep. Second grade will be going to Boulevard in June. So they'll be transitioning, they'll be going over to different points and just getting a little tour of the school and being able to see some of the classrooms and just where they'll be going onward to next year.
And a few just last presentations that we're kind of all doing as an elementary. We have the Ellen Sonopoly Dance Company coming. We're going to have the residency done with second grade. You'll hear more about that with Boulevard's report. And then tomorrow at Park Terrace, we're having actually the GPD K9 units coming in to do a presentation, which will occur in the next few days in all the elementary buildings. And then the last thing is our, just our budget open night.
We're having some events, just have families come out. So we'll have to. We're having some events, just to have families come out, so we'll have different things that you can do, different activities, different books that you can grab, too. We'll have a table for books to be selected to and to take home. And one other thing that we did put on here, too, we have kindergarten screening that's coming up in May as well.
So the books that people get to vote at the schools or at the high school where they vote?
At the high school. We're going to do it all here.
Great.
Yep.
Okay, for Boulevard, you're going to see some similar things, but obviously some differences here. A similarity is our attendance rate. For the year, we're at 88.2, and for the month of March, we're at 89.1. We are continuing to work with our attendance teams at the building level as all the, as all the schools are, and that includes all of our support staff, Mr. Snow, myself, and our parent community educator, Sean, trying to target certain students that have high attendance needs. We just completed our first round of New York State Assessments, and those are the ELA tests. Those are not new, but the way that we are presenting them is. So typically, they've always been a paper and pencil assessment this year for Boulevard and for the middle school. It's CBT or computer-based testing. So the tests are the same, but the way that the students are actually taking them is different. Our students did a fantastic job. We've been preparing them for months using these programs, one using some Datamate, which is a computer program that really mirrors the state assessment. Teachers have been using that and creating their own assessments within it. We had 95% participation from our building for the ELA assessment, which was a great turnout. Really, even looking at our attendance rates, it was a challenge to get that many of our students to complete the assessment. They, again, just very proud of the work that the teachers have done preparing students, and then I'm very proud of the effort that the students gave. Of course, we don't know what the results are of those right now. That does come to us a little bit later, but I am really excited to see how their efforts pan out. We have our math state assessment coming right after break. We're going to be giving it on the 27th and 28th, which is Wednesday and Thursday of that week, coming back from break. Again, that will be a CBT, computer-based assessment.
Has the state indicated when they want all schools to be computer-based tested?
They haven't yet. We're assuming within a few years. We've been hearing that for a decade now.
Sure.
Great. Some end-of-year events and trips planned for Boulevard. I know a lot of parents are interested to hear about our in-person field trips. All of our students will be attending in-person field trips at the end of the year. Should I say what fifth grade is, or is it a secret still? Fifth grade? So I'll just say this. Our third grade, that's a big trip, right? The fifth grade one is the big one. Everybody really wants our fifth grades to be able to experience that. Fifth grade is going to be going to Albany. They're going to go on one of the Dutch Apple Cruises, go to the State Museum, and have a day in Albany, which is going to be great. Fourth grade is going to be going to the Iroquois Museum, and third grade looks like they're going to Howe Caverns. We're planning all of those events right now. We did talk about the second graders coming to third grade for that transition event. We're going to do the same with our fifth graders going to the middle school like we've done in the past. Fifth graders will be able to go up to the middle school in June to see the actual school and meet the teachers. We are going to have a fifth grade ceremony at the end of the year as well. I am really excited about the Ellen Sinoply Dance Company residency. This is our second year as an elementary program for that. We've been working with these local artists for many years. It's a great opportunity for our students, and I'm excited to see it happening in second and in fifth grade, so we know that students have something to look forward to when they get to those grade levels. And they get to really work with professional artists, professional musicians, and create movement, and it's something that they may never really have another chance to do. So that's open for all of our fifth graders to do. And we do have Kid Smart and Net Smart assemblies coming up this week, right? And those are really dealing with Aaron's Law and how that impacts our elementary-age students at Boulevard. And of course, we have our PBIS celebrations continuing, and Cory the Dribbler is a crowd favorite. He'll be coming back to Boulevard as well.
All right. Well, we had some other great things happening. We did have our fifth grade band. They performed in late March. They did an excellent job. They played three songs and joined some of the other students from the middle school as well there. We do have a fourth and fifth grade chorus concert coming up soon, May 24th, and the science fair and art show will both be something to look forward to. That's coming May 11th, and we have some pretty excited kids about that. We have some nice bulletin boards around the school promoting it at this time, and kids are getting pretty pumped about that. After-school activities and clubs that we're running right now. We have a Minecraft club that's a regional competition, right? It's a competition between different schools, and so the kids are really into that. We have a library that's filled with kids at the end of the school day, participating in Minecraft club. Art club, kindness club right now is working with the local animal shelter. They're raising money. They've also been to the animal shelter, helping out and kind of just donating their time. So some really great things are happening there. Every week, we've had a work-in-progress challenge. The work-in-progress challenge aligns with iReady, where our students are working on their own individual pathways that are set for them. So each student has their own pathway that meets the needs that they have. And this past week, we've been doing what we call a time-on-task challenge, where the students, we're really looking for them to hit this 40-minute mark by the end of the week, 40 minutes of hitting ELA and math iReady. And the grade level who has the most participation and the most students who meet their goal, that grade level gets an extra recess. So they always get excited about that. And then lastly down here, Ronald McDonald House Charities. We counted it up today. Boulevard raised almost $5,000. So I mean, between all of the elementaries, we're almost, we're pretty close to $9,000 to $10,000. So that was a really, really generous community who was giving. We have some families who've had a lot of interaction with Ronald McDonald House themselves, even some teachers who volunteer and help out. So really impressed, and for our first year, this is, that's a huge number, a huge number to hit. Our challenge, you heard Cody and Bernadette are going to get silly-stringed. Our challenge is that we are going to have a water balloon fight, Brian and I, against a, basically a class, a whole class of kids who have, who have the highest amount of participation. So every day on the announcements, it's always like, that guy, you know? Right? So the kids think it's hilarious. They walk out, like, we're going to get you. All right. That's good. And then the final part of our elementary presentation tonight, we are currently in discussions regarding Summer Learning Academy, K through five. That is, the plan is to run a Summer Learning Academy again. This year, it's going to be held at Park Terrace. We're going to be targeting students who are in need of some more support. And then we're going to be combining both rigorous academics and some of the high-interest learning opportunities for our kids. So we're really excited for another year of Summer Learning Academy. And so here is the last part of our Boulevard presentation. There's some really great things happening at Boulevard, our Minecraft club. This right here, we didn't talk much about, but we had, our PE teachers did Rock and Bowl for their end of their unit, their bowling unit. So they set up the gym, they turn the lights off, put lights all over, strobe lights and loud music, and the kids got to do Rock and Bowl. It was a, I actually, I actually went in for an observation that day. It was awesome. The kids were so excited. They, I guess, climbing on the floor, they were so excited. So yeah, they're very excited to keep moving.
Any questions for Boulevard? Great job, guys.
Just one quick thing for all of you. First, I got friends and family all over the country that follow our Facebook page, and they absolutely love the pictures and the stuff that's going on. So I mean, I just, I encourage you to make Osama earn his money and keep sending him pictures and get him on Facebook, because people love it, and they see all the great things that's going on. And the other thing is, I didn't see any, are you guys doing anything with Field Day at Kingsborough and Park Terrace?
Yeah, we did put that on, but in June, we're all having a Field Day. You guys up as well? So all three elementaries will have a Field Day.
Okay, all right. I was just, I was thinking, you know, if not, if you weren't, for whatever reason, you know, it'd be great to get the second graders maybe together for a Field Day at Boulevard, as they're all going to be going in the third grade, you know, maybe a nice little, you know, kind of a warm welcome or orientation, whatever. I mean, I know they're going to probably maybe have one, but you just have fun day, or maybe even invite them to a Field Day.
I like that idea. That's certainly something we can look at. What I really like about the second graders coming to Boulevard, which they're going to be doing soon, is that that is hosted actually by our fifth graders. I didn't get into that, but our fifth graders write the scripts. The fifth graders are our ambassadors and take the kids around the building, the second graders, those incoming third graders, they take them around the building as ambassadors. And they, fifth grade students really take that as part of their charge. So even incorporating that into some sort of additional Field Day type activities could be really interesting as well.
All right, just, yeah, because I didn't see it on either one of those. You skipped over here.
We're all doing it.
You may imagine it was in a Field Day, Field Day, but, you know, you probably even had one in a couple of years.
Right.
It's been several years.
Yeah.
Three, two, every three years. I'm sorry, I want to add, we got three out of four of our elementary administrators are new to their position this year, and to see the collaboration, continuity in programming and effort, our students are the beneficiaries of it. I think it's noticeable when you are in these buildings, you see happy students, you go in, you see hands-on, student-led instruction. I'm really excited for the future, so I'm happy to hear the results. I think when people talk about the COVID slide, to hear that we're ahead of where we were testing this time last year by four percentage points, that's, that's really encouraging. That was, excuse me, that was pre-COVID.
Yeah.
So that wasn't last year. Those numbers are, obviously, it's apples to oranges, it's different cohorts, but the point is, it's, that eliminates the idea of a COVID slide for, you know, one building, but I imagine those results are similar across the board. Hopefully, this is just the beginning of really speed and data-driven instruction, diversified instruction, addressing the social-emotional needs, and I love their focus on attendance. We got to get students here and keep them here to, to help improve their lives.
The structure of the presentation was great tonight, too.
Outstanding job, Vince.
Dave, talking about attendance, so where do we stand, like around 88, 89% for, for all, all three schools, right? How does that compare to pre-COVID? So...
I think you had mentioned that it's about, we were, I think each of us were similar and hovering about 92%. The state really wants us to be striving for that 95%.
What about the rest of the schools in the area, in the region? Where are they, you know, for elementary?
They're not as bad as ours. So we, our attendance issues, you know, I think if you boil it down to, it's a minority of people, for sure. And at the elementary level, it's not students. The students just aren't having, getting here, and it's not, they're unable to get here on their own anyway. But we do provide transportation with the city, within the city busing. Parents can ride for free. But yeah, it's not an issue in most of the other Fulton County schools. In fact, I think one of the articles suggested that our chronic absenteeism is higher than the rest of them combined, which is alarming if that's a fact. And then, and obviously, I didn't check the numbers because I'm focused on our district, but there's no mistake, and it's an issue. But I think the efforts that you guys are putting forth, and we need to tell our story to Vinnie's point with using Osama, and I think you're doing a good job of that, and keep, keep, keep the pressure on. Students are the beneficiaries, and we do. Thanks, guys.
Any other presentations?
No, no, that's it, that's fine. Thank you.
Other schools in the region also in the COVID slide?
I haven't had that discussion to the, generally across the country, that's been the experience. And I think at the secondary level, they would say that that is more...
But we're being comparative, you know, the schools in the region overall, but I mean...
I haven't seen any, because there hasn't been any required assessments, it's hard to, in the last few years. I think most, like, Chris, you might be able to speak to it more authority than I can, but I don't see, I have not seen any data that shows like who's had the slide and who hasn't.
Yeah, no, it hasn't been distributed yet, I think, but I would assume the summer and...
Secondary level, there are Regents exams this year. It'll be the first time since 2019, since June of 2019, maybe January of 2020.
They were offered last June, but they were not...
They were required. Rich, do you know what percentage of our students took Regents exams?
Last year?
Yeah, like this generalized numbers.
Less than 10%, I would say.
That's unfortunate, but again, they weren't required to take them, so students took the path of least resistance. Because it's not that shocking, you know? But this year, the high school students listening, Regents exams are required for graduation, for advancement.
Thank you again for that report. Student Board Member Report, not present tonight. So next on our agenda, I'd like to take the recommended actions for items 801 through 1903. Any of those need to be pulled? I'll take all of those. Okay. I need a motion. Vincy?
Vincy.
Vincent? Vinnie? Second? Kelly? And any questions, any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Kelly. Command?
Yes.
Kevin Cusell?
Yes.
Sharon Holley?
Yes.
Vincent Salvion?
Yeah.
Edward Surgis?
Oh, sweet.
Betty?
I wasn't sleeping, I was out. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
There's no executive session.
Okay, there'll be no executive session, so can I have a motion for adjournment, Vinnie, and seconded by Kelly?
Sharon, you can charge immediately.
Those in favor.
Kelly DiMaio?
Yes.
Kevin Cusell?
Yes.
Sharon Holley?
Yes.
Vincent Salvion?
Yes.
Eddie Surgis?
Yes.
Thank you.
This is a message to Rob Curris. We missed you.
Have a great day.